Notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News on Tuesday, January 6, 2025, as well as posted on the city's website. Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Council members, Briggs Jones.
Present.
Cherry.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Wyatt.
Present.
Vice President Sessoms.
Present.
Council President Hockaday.
Present.
All members present and accorum.
Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
(Inaudible) United States of America and a sovereign public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and the love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and all those who work for peace. Amen.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the amendments of the regular meeting of May 12, 2025?
So moved.
You have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the minutes have been approved. Okay, we'll start with communications from the mayor. You can go in any order that you like, mayor, your presentation or your proclamation.
I believe that when the Herald-News is going to be giving the first proclamation, no, receiving the first, receiving the first proclamation, I'm sorry. So we will start with that one, but I know, I know we have two, and I believe that there's another one that's supposed to happen, but it's, it's a secret one, so I don't want to reveal. Um, do you want to start? Oh, not commissioner, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna start with Iris House. It's not, it's surprise.
Hello, I'm Ingrid Floyd, I'm here representing Iris House. I'll ask that Mayor Adrian O'Mapp, please join me. So, Mayor Mapp, I come to the Iris House to thank you for your commitment to the diversity of Plainfield and for always showing your pride. I come also today to encourage you and our city council that as we continue to make Plainfield the great city that it is, that we also stand by the diversity of Plainfield, the authenticity of Plainfield, that we keep committed to the culture of Plainfield, and that we also make sure that Plainfield remains affordable for all of our hardworking residents, including those who are low income to those who are higher income. And in doing so, we maintain the diversity of our great city, the queen city, and we thank you for showing your pride year-round, not just in the month of June, and we thank you and we want to present this award to you that says, Iris House honors and recognizes our fearless leadership, our fearless leader for your courage and your unwavering advocacy, not just for LGBTQI rights, but for the rights of all citizens of Plainfield. So we thank you and we honor you during June Pride Month, and we continue to ask you to show your pride year-round. So congratulations, and we thank you.
Thank you.
(Applause).
Photo. Photo.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation that we are presenting to Commissioner Rebecca Williams for her tireless advocacy year-round, and for all that she does to make sure that the LGBTQ community is represented, and she's always there during Pride Month to wave the flag and to make sure that we do right by the LGBTQ plus community. And for that reason, we are presenting this proclamation to her, which my eyes wouldn't allow me to read right now, but, please.
Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Americans have made significant contributions to our nation in every field and endeavor, and whereas the ethnic, cultural, and civic fabric of Plainfield is enriched by the vital contributions, leadership, and resilience of the LGBTQ plus community, and whereas the 1969 Stonewall uprising in New York City and the subsequent First Pride March in 1970 ignited a powerful movement for justice and equality. Today, LGBTQ plus Pride Month stands as a celebration of that legacy and the tireless pursuit of respect, inclusion, and human rights for all people regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community continues to demonstrate courage, determination, and authenticity in the face of persistent challenges, including discrimination in healthcare, housing, public accommodations, and education. And whereas the city of Plainfield strongly condemns ongoing attacks against the LGBTQ plus community, including violence towards transgender women of color, discriminatory policies such as Florida's so-called Parental Rights in Education Bill, and the proliferation of anti-LGBTQ plus legislation across the country. And whereas during June 2025, the city of Plainfield proudly observes LGBTQ plus Pride Month reaffirming our commitment to a society that honors all individuals' dignity, safety, and freedom, we stand in unwavering solidarity with the LGBTQ plus community in the fight against bigotry and the pursuit of justice and equity. And whereas the city of Plainfield will host three events in celebration of Pride Month. June 4, we had their pride flag raising, which Commissioner Williams was present for and led the charge on. Saturday, June 21, 7:00 PM, Pride Paint Party at the P-PAC, that's at 7:00 PM, I said, and Saturday, June 28, 7:00 PM, Soul Line Dancing Night, also at P-PAC. Now therefore, I, Adrian O'Mapp, Mayor of the city of Plainfield by the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Plainfield, and I encourage all residents to build bridges of understanding, foster inclusive and safe environments, and celebrate this month with programs, events, and acts of solidarity that uplift the voices and contributions of the LGBTQ plus individuals. And we are very honored to present this to one of, the first, correct, the first openly, openly gay Commissioner for Union County.
I do have a few words. Thank you, council, thank you, mayor.
Pardon my back.
No problem.
So, just a couple of things. So, good evening, everyone, council president, city council mayor, Adrian Mapp. So, I wanted to thank you all very much for this invitation and for this incredible honor of receiving the 2025 proclamation, not on behalf of myself necessarily, but on behalf of our community, our LGBTQ community here in Plainfield. So, as someone who's lived and served in this region for actually going on 27 years, unbelievably, you know, I accept this with immense gratitude, you know, and as we know, Pride Month is not just about celebration, it's also about visibility, it's about honoring the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement as affirmed in the proclamation and reaffirming our commitment to the values of equity, dignity, and inclusion. So we do raise the flag, we march, we speak out, not just for ourselves, but for the generations to come. We're still fighting for the right to be seen, to be safe, and to be supported. I want to thank the city of Plainfield for continuing to be that community for me, and, you know, when I first moved here, that was really the main reason I moved to Plainfield, was because it was so affirming and so inclusive and so welcoming back in 1998. Your leadership and your allyship, they matter. So this proclamation is a reminder that progress is possible. And I did want to just say a couple of things. One is, you know, I'm really also honored to be here with Ingrid Floyd and Iris House. And I've said this at other pride gatherings this month, but it needs to always be said, in this past year, Plainfield remains in the top 10 of cities in New Jersey with high rates of HIV/AIDS. So the work that Iris House is doing and continues to do is critical and vital to our population, and the fact that they are here in Plainfield, 209 West 8th Street, doing the work that needs to be done, I just want to honor them, and I'm honored to always sit next to, next to Ingrid. You know, they just do amazing, amazing work. So I urge everyone to stop by their offices and to see what it is that you can do to assist them in providing additional resources for the, for the community. So on behalf of myself and LGBTQ community, not just here in Plainfield, my city, but across the county, thank you all so much.
(Applause).
In terms of, I see something for mental health month, but there's no presentation. So that's just, okay. All right, thank you. All right, so that ends communications from the mayor. We'll next go to discussion items. We will have a public hearing for the calendar year 2025 Plainfield Introduced Budget. Floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak about in the budget. The floor is now open. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Online, the numbers are on the website for you to call in online if you'd like to be heard. Is anyone online? Okay, seeing no one in person. I'll accept a motion to close public hearing on the budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the public hearing on the budget is now closed. Okay, we'll now move to consideration of public, of second reading and final passage. We have ordinances MC 2025-22 and ordinances MC 2025-23, which are scheduled for public hearing and final passage for the regular meeting as advertised. We now move on to resolutions. Okay, we'll first start with the consent agenda, I'm sorry, no, not the consent agenda, just the council, council actions. Those are R 227-25 to R 233-25. Do we have a consensus to add those to the voting meeting, or do we need to remove any?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, great. All right, we'll move to the mayor business administrator items.
Thanks, council president. We have one item tonight. This is a resolution authorizing the ability to apply for and accept a grant from Union County for their 2025 capital project grant in an amount not to exceed $500,000. And I know there was some confusion about the purpose of that money, so I did attach the project description to the resolution. You could see that this is for the purchase of 700 to 710 West 7th Street. As you know, we currently have JFK and Union County as our EMS providers, they are in the city 24/7, and we've been able to temporarily house them in the firehouse. However, it's obviously much more efficient to have them have their own space. We'd also like to have that space as an OEM headquarters, kind of an emergency management, emergency facility. And so we had applied to Union County to get funding to start creating such a facility. We believe that it would increase their efficiency, they'd be able to better deal with their equipment, they can have a space where they can lay out their equipment, fix it on spot, et cetera, and so we believe that this would be a great benefit to the citizens of Plainfield.
Questions from council members?
Yes. My question is, I know you were saying that they're going to be housed a certain place, but with the increase of developments that are coming, it just concerns me that we would definitely, I would definitely recommend for our rescue squad to be back where it was before in the future, and/or are there future plans to get a rescue squad back in Plainfield?
So right now, we have contracts just with Union County and JFK. I know we've talked before about what we, you know, that, what happened with the rescue squad in the past. At this time, there's nothing on the city end that I can say for that. We don't have any plans as far as the city.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, go right ahead.
Who's the owner of the building, and have we had any conversations with the Plainfield Rescue Squad?
It's a good question. So, we looked at the deed in order to figure that out. The deed was turned over to the Plainfield Rescue Squad, the entity, not any individual person, so it's hard to figure out who to have that conversation with, especially because there has been no filing for the nonprofit organization as it exists on the deed since, for at least four years. So, it's hard to figure out how to have, who to have that conversation with, but if there's a way, you know, if somebody knows, then please reach out.
My next question, you were going to purchase the building at 950, how were you planning to make the difference?
So the building was appraised at 950,000, although the appraiser was not able to go into the building, so we don't know if, you know, if somebody's able to enter, if that value, if that valuation would go up or down, but we're assuming the 950, and we'll be applying for more grants. It's not something that we would put into our budget.
Thank you.
Council president, business administrator, do we know if the Plainfield Rescue Squad is still a registered 501(c)(3) with the state of New Jersey?
The last filing that I saw was, I believe, 2020.
Okay, and in their incorporation as a 501(c)(3), did they have a board of directors?
I believe that when they existed as a 501(c)(3), they did have a board.
Okay. And if we were to move forward, depending on your ability to make contact with the appropriate and legal designee that could negotiate on their behalf, what would be the next steps?
So if we were to move forward, if I was able to, if I'm able to get in contact with somebody who is a legal designee, I mean, and we would have, obviously have to figure that out legally, who is the designated person, because again, the deed is just to the squad. We could start negotiations in terms of the sale of that building, and I, you know, I'd probably be corporation counsel myself, and probably Director Fields would start that conversation.
And if they choose not to sell the building, what would be the end result of that relative to the grant that we received?
Well, the city has other ways in which they can procure the building, should it not go through sale.
Would we consider?
She asked specifically about the grant.
So, if I may interject here, we're not going to go through a conversation about negotiations in this setting. If you want to go into closed session, we will gladly do that, but we will not have an open conversation about negotiating with any particular party concerning the sale or the acquisition of a piece of real estate.
Thank you for that, but my question was about what are the next steps? So, the next steps would be try to contact the legal representative and have a conversation with them.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then in terms of the grant, did you, I think the council-
She asked, she asked what happens to the grant if they do not sell, she asked what happens with the grant.
Okay. So, the grant, well, we would use that money towards, I mean, that, it's hard to, it's hard to say that without going into executive session, I guess, so.
Other questions? This side, right side?
Council president?
Go, go right ahead.
Yes, okay. So you said the next steps would be to reach out, to try to determine who we would speak to, to start the negotiations?
Yes.
Okay, so did we start with the Keston family or the Lowe family?
We can't go by any family, I mean, it's not, it's, this is a legal process, so we would have to drill down on the deed and who owns the property, and it's hard to do when there's no filing of the entity that exists on the deed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
When you say filing, could you clarify what you mean by filing?
The 501(c)(3), filing for the actual nonprofit registration.
Yeah, so the corporation documents of whatever the entity is, I'm sure there'll be some, they designate, decide who has authorization to transact business, so we'd have to reach out to whoever has authorization. Okay. Do we have a consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, should be added. Department of Finance?
Council president, was that consent?
It was consent. Department of Finance?
Yes.
Present 235-25, please.
Okay, so I have one resolution, resolution authorizing tax refunds on properties totaling approximately $21,694.67, primarily for duplicate payments and for overpayments.
Any, any questions from council members? Okay, do we have a consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this shall be added. The police department has two items. Director Avenue, floor is yours.
Good evening, council president.
Good evening.
The police department has two items for your consideration tonight. The first one is a correction to a resolution that we put forward last month in regards to the total cost for these three patrol vehicles. The figure we were given from Nielsen for it was incorrect, so we're bringing it back with the correct figure, which is basically to purchase these vehicles for an amount not to exceed $147,465.32. Resolution number two is a resolution to enter into a one-year renewal contract with sound thinking in an amount not to exceed $168,852 for individuals who don't know, that is ShotSpotter, that is a gunshot detection system we have here in the city. We've had this contract for at least the last 15 or 16 years, and we feel it's necessary in our job and what we do to protect citizens here in the city.
Thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
Questions from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that should be added to the voting meeting. Okay, the Department of Public Works, please present your items.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Department of Public Work has three resolutions for your consideration. Resolution R 238, authorizing submission of an application to the Georgia Department of Environmental Protection. This is for hazardous discharge mitigation funds in the amount of $562,500, and we had a typo in this resolution that will bring your attention, the $565,500 should be removed and replaced with $562,500 for this grant that we're applying for. And this is for Madison Avenue Park remediation project. Resolution 239, authorizing rejection of a bid for the Georgia Department, to the Georgia Department of Transportation on the local transportation project fund for Route 28. Lowest bid was $3,255,000, but we're trying to maximize this entire bid, we have $5,000,000 for this, so we want to just, the next resolution is to submit an extension to the Department of Transportation for this grant, so we can maximize the $5,000,000 total for this grant. This is all funded with our tax dollars. So, that's with this resolution of both, or 239. It's for the rejection of the bid that was submitted. And 240 is the extension of the bid for itself. We received the handout, and we had some streets that were added to the, for this project. And I just want to bring them to, into the record. And this is Resolution 240-25. This is for the road improvement project, Plainfield Avenue, West Front Street to West Fifth Street, Roosevelt Avenue, East Fourth Street to East Fifth Street, West Less East Fourth Street from Plainfield Avenue to Watchung Avenue, West Less East Fifth Street from Plainfield Avenue to Watchung Avenue, and East Fifth Street from Roosevelt Avenue to Richmond Street, which is awarded to the city of Plainfield. We received the funding, so we just want to take the revenue that money to take care of the rest of this and get everything done. So, we'll maximize that $5 million, per purpose of this.
Understood. Questions from council members?
Director Abney, what were the findings for 238-25 at the park?
That's where the story filled. It's mainly stuff back in the day, I guess, where they were buried, and there was a coal site there, coal back and things like that on the site. But it was a straw filled, it was buried with rock, dirt, wood, et cetera. So, we're letting that in.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President?
Please go right ahead.
Director, first, I want to thank you for the speed bumps on Kensington and Marlborough. The residents are extremely happy, and I want to acknowledge you publicly for being so very responsive each and every time that I reach out to you and your level of professionalism. So, I want to thank you publicly for that. Regarding 238-25, did I read correctly that the total project cost was 750?
Correct. The total project is 750, and 75% of the funding we're looking for for that comes in at 562.
So, the 562 of the grant would cover 75% of that, and the other 25% would the city have to?
Yes, those are the ones we'd have to.
Okay. Regarding 239, is there an ETA on when we can foresee the revised bid announcement?
Yes. The revised bid, the revised bid, right, we get the numbers, so we're talking a few months from now that that'll come out.
Okay. And given the grant cap, do we foresee the revised scope of work exceeding that cap of $5 million? Because the bids, as you mentioned, currently are at 3.2 to 3.4 mil.
Correct. Thank you. And 1.7 we have remained, and we know, we looked at the numbers, our engineering estimate comes quite a bit under the number. We'll be close to maximizing that $5 million.
Okay.
We're not over it at all. But again, we just want to be, we're trying to use no tax dollars at all for this entire project.
And we appreciate that. Regarding 240-25, are you requesting the extension from the state, the city, or both?
The state, the city, and now you all turn to submit.
Because if we don't have that fund encumbered by June 30th, is there a chance that we could lose it?
No, we were awarded the funding. It's extending the amount of roads that we want to do in the area, that's all. But we were awarded the funding.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further questions from council members?
Yes, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, quick question on R238-25. So, are these issues arising now because we're looking to do more development at that site, escape park?
Yes. Now, under green, the question under green acres funding, yes, we have to do this now. That's any park we have in the city now. We have to get an environmental assessment of everything that we're doing prior to being done. So, we have to test the soils in every park before we can do anything. We need type of green acres funding received.
Okay. So, I was only asking, thanks for the clarification, because I know it was a park and a skate park already that many people visited. So, this is just going forward, we always have to do this.
Yes, when you get green acres funding, yes, for.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
One more question.
Go right ahead.
Sorry, Director Abney, for 240-25, which grant? How do we determine how the curbs are funded or put together? Because some roads are done without the curbs.
This is NJDT funding, so we have to do curbing, inlet, everything, just, but this NJDT grant funding. So, those are the ones we use for that. We did the Georgia Department of Transportation funding, such as that, we have the curbing, everyone curbing, inlets, handicap ramps, et cetera. So, we try to monitor what curbing is needed, and so we assess it.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. Do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? All right. This shall be added to the voting meeting. Next, the...
Council President?
Yes.
Can I just clarify with the Director that 238 was changed from, was it 562 to 565?
From 565 to 562, 500.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The Director of Economic Development, please present your items.
Good evening, council. I have items 241-25 to 249-25. 241-25, this is a resolution to begin a study for the area located at 437 to 457 West Front Street. This would be a non-condemnation redevelopment study to begin. And if there is found a need of redevelopment, we would commence with preparing a redevelopment plan. This area right now is to look at mixed use, mainly focusing on commercial. The next resolution is to look at the reexamination of the downtown East Front Street development plan. The reason why we're looking at this is to add additional uses, particularly for the location at 163 East Front Street, the Boys and Girls Club. Number 243 is a resolution to also reexamine a redevelopment plan. This is for the West Front Street and Clinton Avenue redevelopment plan. This is to allow additional uses, as well as to look at the height of the building, in particular, to allow for a rooftop element. Item number, resolution number 244-25, I am asking to be pulled at this time. Resolution 245-25, this is to look at the designation of Moon Builders as the developer for 614-20 Lee Place. This is to look at the development of 16, excuse me, 14 units. These would all be workforce units. It would also have 14 parking spaces. It also includes a community benefit of $25,000. Right now, what we're looking for, the community benefit, is to continue our shuttle service that we mentioned with previous developments. The next resolution is to amend the designation of PB Real Estate LLC. This location is along Front Street. It was a development that originally was a project description of three buildings. This is changing it to two buildings. It originally was 229 units. This is to decrease the number of units to 223. It was originally 5,000 square feet of commercial. This would just be slightly over in the commercial total that we would have. It'd be a slightly over 5,000 square feet. It originally was 222 parking spaces. This would reduce the parking spaces to 217. The next resolution is to transfer designation. This designation was already approved for 1301 to 07 West Seventh Street. The reason why we're bringing it to you for the transfer of the redevelopers designation is because anytime we change membership of over 10%, we have to present the redevelopment agreement again for transfer. The resolution is 248. 248 is for the resolution of support for cannabis cultivation and manufacturing. Cultivation and manufacturing located at 300 to 324 Madison Avenue. The cannabis cultivation and manufacturing offers the city an opportunity to receive 2% of the total revenue. It is expected that with this facility on each side, you're going to see a little over $10 million in revenue, one for cultivation, another $10 million in revenue for manufacturing, which would bring the city's revenue annually on the 2% to a little over $400,000. Looking for the resolution for a letter of support for a cannabis consumption lounge for a plant base. Plant base is also already approved as a retailer located at 148 to 158 East Second Street. This would be a support for a cannabis lounge for the retail that has already been approved. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions from council members?
So, for 248-25, the cannabis ordinance states 33% of the Plainfield residents should be hired, correct?
Yes.
How are we ensuring that Plainfield residents are being hired and monitoring like that on an ongoing basis?
Sure. So, a part of it is when we're presented with a business plan, they have to present us a business plan that states about their staffing. In many cases, a lot of our cannabis vendors have lifelong residents that are hired, and they are part of the initial structure. We also look that a part of our cannabis ordinance that's out there is that there's some kind of plan to set them on a path towards management and not just entry level. And we monitor them as well when we do the quarterly basis, when we get our revenue as well.
Thank you.
Can you, can you clarify what that means? We monitor them on, so are they submitting staff rosters? We're making sure these are Plainfield residents. How are we monitoring them? So, they're, they're not submitting staff rosters, but they're required to submit annual reports in their audit reports.
Yes. Director, regarding Resolution 249-25, with regard to the consumption lounge portion of the retail business, our other retail establishments, they don't have consumption lounges, right?
We only have one retail establishment with a consumption lounge.
Right. I'm just a little concerned, because I know that we already approved one on Clinton Avenue. I don't think we need too many consumption lounges. Is there a community benefit? Like, what's the benefit to the community for having a consumption lounge, only in your opinion?
The community benefit is the revenue, because if you have a place where they're consuming, you have more revenue that's there. And we also get a financial community benefit when we designate each of these vendors.
Sure, sure. I appreciate Resolution 248-25, because we are creating jobs for our community. But I personally just don't believe that we need more consumption lounges. I mean, I think that people have a place to go, especially when they go to the other retail establishments to consume their products. So, we're just trying to get more of, you know, how is it a benefit to the community? That's, that's it. Thank you, Director.
So, if I may, Councilman, just to answer the question, in terms of the number of jobs that we're adding from the community, this also, it is a social economic impact in itself within the cannabis retail. So, we're looking at not only reentry, we're looking for jobs for lifelong Plainfield residents, that you're not having most of the people that are operating the facility that are not from, originally from Plainfield.
Sure.
So, within the cannabis industry themselves, we are seeing a number of jobs, over hundreds of jobs that are coming in.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Director. Go ahead.
Yes, Council President, just to add to that, 249-25, consumption lounge, for clarification, can you just explain what that is? It's a place where are no edibles, where they'd be able to smoke there. What is a consumption lounge?
So, they will be able to consume anything that is dispensed at that retail. So, if that retail is dispensing anything that is the buds, if it's anything with the edibles, anything with the drinks, it can be consumed there, only if it's dispensed at that retail vendor.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President? I want to go back to 248-25. I'm not clear on how we're monitoring the, if a Plainfield resident is hired. You said it was quarterly basis, but you look at, you don't look at a roster. I'm still unclear.
So, when we get the initial business plan, we get a business plan that states the staffing plan for that business. Then we're monitoring as they're hiring on a quarterly basis, they're able to release it to us. We don't have it currently in our plan that we request a specific roster, but we have the conversation with them when we do our quarterly audits with them.
So, can you amend this ordinance to add that you need to start looking at the addresses?
Yes, we can.
And then on 249-25, what does security look like at this?
So, and Director Abney, you can help me out with this, but every cannabis vendor is required to have a security plan. That security plan includes where there are cameras, we're not going to disclose where they are, the lighting, what they're doing for the pickup, the exchange, and, and the dispensing of funds. And they're required to have armed security at all times.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, please go right ahead.
Director, just regards to designating any developer or any agreement, I know in many of the documents, they have boilerplate language that says that they must make good faith effort to employ qualified city and county residents and patronize qualified city and county businesses. What is our concrete plan for monitoring that, ensuring that the residents of Plainfield are getting choice first when it comes to employment, for those who are qualified for those jobs?
So, first, when we look at the qualification for the jobs, we are making an effort for the workforce development. This is a part of why we invested, or the partnership in workforce development over at the South Second Street Youth Center for construction and for training in the trade, so they are able to obtain the jobs in, for the developers. We have been making partnerships with the carpenters union to make sure that that training is done as well. We've been reaching out to the Department of Labor for reformalized apprenticeship programs. And in terms of talking with our developers, we make sure that we offer a construction job expo annually to make sure that there's an opportunity to sign up. We are going to make sure that we begin and we keep the records of monitoring who's actually getting hired once they put in an application.
Thank you.
I, I want to just talk about the, ask a couple of questions about the cannabis ones, because it seems to be the hot button issue. So, first, regarding 248, cannabis cultivation, I think cultivation is, is, will always be a, a big opportunity for Plainfield because of the revenues that they generate. They make significantly more than the retail market because their geographic boundary or their geographic location where they sell is statewide, where retail is primarily limited to who can get there conveniently, or who may deliver from there. And delivery hasn't quite gotten off the ground, so. As well, the cultivations are not marked. They don't need to be advertised in terms of what's located at the particular building. So, unless you attend meetings and see the address, you may not know that a particular building is actually growing cultivation. So, it's, it's, it's less of, it's something that will fly under the radar, but certainly generate significant revenues for the city. So, and certainly in favor of, of, of having cultivators here in Plainfield. Regarding 249, my... Regarding 249, my thought is, I'm just looking at the market now in terms of retail cannabis. I know we have Queen City, there was Island Vibes downtown, as well as there was Royal M. that opened, so three cannabis facilities that opened up. And the area downtown is still in progress, and, you know, we have grand plans to create a pedestrian mall, make the area near Gavitt Place walkable, you know, bring new restaurants, et cetera. But based on what I've seen with Royal M., and it not being as successful as the others, I know that these facilities are going to need something to distinguish themselves and to draw in additional business, you know. So recognizing that, I think we don't have the benefit of seeing the other cultivation facility on Clinton Avenue actually materialize yet, so we don't know, but I kind of liken the cannabis cultivation to like a bar, but for cannabis. And just in my humble opinion, you know, I believe that the influence of cannabis is less than the influence that those feel when they drink. You know, operating a motor vehicle, et cetera, under the influence of alcohol is extremely But I won't go into it any further, just share my thoughts about that. Can you talk about, in a cannabis lounge, what they do in terms of ventilation? Is it similar to having a cigar bar? Obviously, if they're going to be smoking in there, there needs to be some types of, some type of modalities in order to make sure that the air is removed, the smoke, et cetera, from these types of buildings. Have there been standards or anything that have, that the state or the Cannabis Commission has set forth in terms of consumption lounges?
The industry standard is a little stricter than a cigar lounge, because you have to have a full air mitigation plan, and to remove their air quality. So for example, the ventilation system that's going in, it's stronger than it has to be for a cigar lounge where you're smoking tobacco.
Okay. All right, thank you. And, you know, also regarding the, you know, ensuring that we have Plainfield residents in this, I think is, you know, a fantastic idea. I'm glad the councilwoman suggested that. They are, these cannabis retailers, all classes of cannabis are required to report their earnings to us quarterly, and then render a payment of taxes to us of 2%. And I do think it's a good idea, that's an appropriate time that we extract the information from them to make sure that they are compliant, that, so to the extent that we aren't insuring, or even if there's like a particular form that we need to create, that they fill out that goes with it, those are all things that maybe, that we should do. And if we need to make it law, then, you know, I don't know if we need to make a resolution, or I'm sorry, an amendment to this resolution, just to add that component, but I certainly would be in favor of that, so.
Council President?
Go right ahead, Mayor.
I would caution the council against any notion of having people's addresses in light of Daniel's Law. I think it's dangerous for us to have the addresses of employees, especially information that's operable, and so I would caution this governing body to think hard about that.
Okay, so I hear you, it seems to be a valid concern. So is it, you know, somewhat of a self-reporting, a self-certification, or could it be something that maybe only one person views, not, you know, something that's publicly available, but just somebody that can verify it, you know, who works for the city?
Yes, and perhaps we could have the, perhaps we can have the cannabis business swear to a statement that will be binding to indicate that there are X number of people who live in Plainfield, or employed by that particular business. I think that we can come up with some method that would give us the assurance that Plainfield residents are being employed. But to have addresses available to the public, I think is an idea that may not be in the best interest of those individuals.
Yeah, I'd agree, people don't want their addresses out there, that's no question, and that's not the goal.
Mayor, may I ask, because a part of the business plan is that, within the staffing plan, they have to state how many of their employees are Plainfield residents, but not provide the addresses, so maybe we have to provide an ongoing report of the staffing plan, that's just at that level.
I'd also like to defer to the Corporation Council on this, but I don't think amending the resolution would be enforceable, because it would have to be in the agreement that the city signs, and the developer as well, to confirm that he agrees with that. So amending the resolution wouldn't be enforceable unless he's agreeing as well, so the business plan, the agreement, whatever's attached to that resolution, would have to be the document that's changed.
Well, folks have already agreed, you know, to hire Plainfield residents, so now it's just a matter of ensuring compliance.
Enforcement, and what's the consequences if they're not? What do we do if they're not?
They are not following the ordinance, so we can look at their license again, their support.
I'm sorry?
They're not following the ordinance, so we could look at their license and the support, just like any business.
Question, so in that original ordinance, where it says 33%, what is the consequence in that ordinance? Is there a consequence?
You would get your license pulled, there's a license for each of those classes?
On a quarterly basis.
Not on a quarterly?
If you're looking at this on a quarterly basis or an annual basis, if they're not complying, the consequences, you could pull their license?
We don't issue the licenses. We issue letters of support. The CRC issues licenses. So I would suggest that we could issue a letter to withdraw support from that particular licensee.
Okay.
Council President?
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry, one question. With some good statements surrounding the Daniel's Law, so just as we run our meeting as well, should we stop requiring our residents to come up and give their name and address for safety?
Yeah, I think Daniel's Law is limited to law enforcement and judges.
No, I understand that, it's law enforcement and judges, but we were just talking about employees saying, how are we gonna track and have the KPIs that say, this amount of people live in the city of Plainfield, and we say we can't accept their addresses because of Daniel's Law? That's what I heard in the meeting today.
Council President, I think the counselor has made a valid point, and I think that there's time that we should refrain from asking people their exact addresses during public comments.
All right. Look, I don't have an issue with it, people can state their street names, yeah.
That resolution's adopted annually at the reorganization meeting, and I believe the purpose behind it was to give Plainfield residents an opportunity to speak first, but that doesn't prohibit a resident from just saying, "Plainfield resident," and then their name. But that resolution that we adopt annually, we just have to be amended, simple amendment.
Okay.
And I think you should be required to say to city where you reside.
Sounds good to me. All right, getting things done. All right, so let's.
Bring it into the record, please.
You want the mic, you wanna come up here? No, I'm scared.
Okay, we're gonna have order, we're gonna respect the council people, okay? We're not gonna talk out of line, you disrespect, that's the book we're not gonna do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that being said, can I have a question? Okay.
Yeah.
Director, just a quick question. R241-25, I know you said you was looking at that property, are you gonna be looking at that during the planning meeting, to see what's gonna go there? There's no idea what's gonna go there, you're just observing that particular area right now?
We're just beginning this study.
Yeah, okay, the 437, that's 57, because I know that's an open space next to Fenrose Liquors.
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, and then the next question is, R245-25, I believe you said that was gonna be three stories with 14 units and 14 parking spaces? All right, so if it's gonna be three stories, I guess it's gonna be like four units per story with two added somewhere, right?
Right, so they, it has parking over to the side right now, but the concept will be presented at the planning board.
Okay, all right, and then the next question is, I know we talked about the cannabis, but how many dispensaries total are in Plainfield?
So we have three that are open, and we have two more that are approved.
Okay. All right, and, I know it's a question for something else, I believe you covered 246-25, when you were talking about the apartments or development, it's gonna be a mixed unit with 217 units, is that correct, for R246-25?
222.
222, okay. Okay, that's it for now.
All right.
Thank you.
So do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
No.
No.
Okay. Please state which one you'd like to remove from the voting.
249-25.
Any others? Are there any others? Okay, so can we remove 249-25 from the voting meeting, vote on it separately?
Let's also vote on R248-25.
You say 248?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 248 and 249 removed from the consent agenda? Okay, do we have consensus to move R241 to R247-25 to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that shall.
244 was pulled.
244 was pulled by the director.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's correct. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the Department of Health and Social Services. Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have Resolutions 250-25 through R255-25. 250-25 is a resolution to engage in a contract with NJMF Investment for residential cost estimation services for our chat program, which is our comprehensive housing assistance program. So just for record, our cost estimator will go in and cost out the project. The reason that this is so important to us is that when you are a homeowner, if, we try not to make sure that you don't have change orders. And if we don't have an accurate and appropriate cost estimation, then it could be costly to the resident. We want to avoid that at all costs. And so that is why we are asking for approval for this contract, and it is also, the dollars are grant funded, it is through our grant. R251-25 is a resolution recognizing World Sickle Cell Awareness Day in the city of Plainfield. On that day, we will light up the cupola in red, which is a traditional action that we have been doing for the last couple of years. R252-25 is a resolution opposing the one big beautiful big act, HR1, for undermining immigrant rights, social security, and the well-being of Plainfield residents. I would like to think that everyone knows what this is about, and why we are in such opposition for it. Our department is adamantly opposed to anything that removes rights, that costs citizens and residents the ability to good health care and their livelihood. And basically, this is what this bill will do to citizens and non-citizens. Resolution 253-25 is requesting authorization and consent to enter the contract for stage and sound for the city of Plainfield with Best Kept Secrets Radio for the 2025 Lenny Cathcart House Music Festival. Resolution 254-25 is a resolution authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Plainfield Division of Health, for the Lead Safe Home Remediation Grant. Resolution 255-25 is asking authorization and approval to apply and accept a grant from the Union County Department of Human Services, Division of Individual and Family Support Services. This grant we use for case management, the bulk of it will go to rental assistance and to security deposits. Those are my resolutions, thank you.
Okay, questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilman.
Council President, for R255-25, can you talk about how those funds will be used?
Sure. The bulk of that is diversion, homeless diversion, and so we work to make sure that people don't lose their homes, rather, their apartments, and so we will do rental support. If the individual or the family is past due in their rent, and they're facing eviction, we will, as best we can, provide funds to support them to keep them in their home. The other situation is, is when people are seeking out affordable housing, we do at times, based on this grant and some other grants that we have, are able to help with security deposit, which is one of the largest preventives for people getting in their apartments. They can pull together the money the first month's rent, or the second month's rent, depending on what the landlord asks, but then the security deposit becomes a challenge. And so these are how we use those funds, and we use the bulk of those funds.
Thank you. For R254-25, this is in partnership with Proceed, right?
Yes.
How do our residents qualify for this?
Okay, there's a couple of ways. The initial way is if a child goes to a physician and is tested, which they do on annual basis, and they may have elevated lead in their blood. That triggers a whole different process where it goes to the pediatrician, and then it has to be reported to the state, and then we, through Division of Health, will trigger some investigations, and just, I'm trying to keep it short. And those investigations will allow, usually a rental, it really is a rental, but we do work with landlords, to have remediation on their house. And sometimes it's minor remediation, and that means it could just be window sills, it could be door jams, and sometimes it really is more comprehensive. Depending on how problematic it is, we will spend upwards of $13,000 or $25,000.
And homes are before what year?
1978.
Okay, thank you.
R255-25, did I hear you say that was grant funds?
Yes.
State grant funds?
County.
County grant funds. I know they say all politics is local, but I am seriously watching Washington DC and HUD. My concern is relative to the city of Plainfield, how many of our facilities are HUD-funded?
So I'm gonna separate out that question, because some of those HUD-funded falls under the Housing Authority, so that's not my responsibility. Our responsibility really falls around housing assistance for those who are income-eligible, and we also work with nonprofits. So if a nonprofit needs assistance, whatever, they may need help to redo their kitchen, particularly in the daycare, they may need ramps to put on to their facility. Those are who we work with through our HUD program. We are deeply concerned, we've been saying this since December, and pretty much every... Um, and, and pretty much every, uh, every council meeting, we have lifted up some kind of resolution, uh, letting the, the community know what we're facing. So, we are deeply concerned about it. Uh, we did receive additional funds for year fifty, and so those are what's included. But, you know, it, it is, it is, it is disturbing, because we get funds cut and then we get funds restored, but you have to go to court to get that done. And so, it is a, it's a problematic process, not just for the city of Plainfield, for, for everyone. But I know, all, all politics are local.
Thank you, Director, and I appreciate you keeping an eye on what's going on in Washington with HUD, because although it may be a housing authority issue, those are the residents who are gonna be looking to us to assist them.
Absolutely correct.
When push comes to shove, so any way we can support getting additional grants to have that contingency fund, which we know we're not gonna be able to save everybody, um, is a good thing, and I support it, so thanks.
So, may I also add that that impacts Section Eight, because I think that we should be aware of that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and all kind of housing assistance programs that people use to help assist their rent. So, you are absolutely correct, if, if they lose that assistance, um, they often come to the city, we will, may not be able to help everyone that comes before us.
We'll do our best.
We will always do our best.
Yeah, I was going to say that, um, when you talked about R two five five dash, uh, two five, uh, dash two five, because, you know, we have a homeless crisis across the country. And I was just wondering if a hundred thousand was gonna even be enough, uh, to take care of people, you know? I was just really concerned about that, especially with all the cuts going on across the country.
So, again, thi- this grant is, is specific, it's just for housing assistance when it comes to rental, and when it comes to, uh, security deposits.
Okay.
I, I, I could keep you here all night to talk about the, the unhoused situation, not only in this nation, but in Plainfield.
Mm-hmm.
It, it is a big issue that we are trying to chip away, uh, I think I said at the budget hearing, as I've said several times. Uh, one of our areas that, that we really focus on is keeping people in their homes as opposed to, um, getting once they're out of their homes. If we can keep, as municipality, keep individuals and families in their home, uh, then that's significant. So, on average, when we talk about a family, we talk about a family of five to seven, right? So, if we keep a family of five to seven in their home, that, that's a great impact. And that allows for them to continue in school, that allows them to lead the life that they need to lead. So, so our big focus is really keeping people in their homes. And, and you would be surprised how many people in all kind of situations come before you, before us, I should say, asking for rental assistance, we try our best to, to do it. We may cobble it, uh, bigger, we've had instances where individuals may owe eight thousand dollars, and it's not their fault, right? It, it's for many things, it could be illness. And one of the things that we do is we work with nonprofits to make sure that if, if you can give us a couple of thousand, you can give us a couple of thousand, we cobble it all together to keep this family in their home.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Director Brennan.
Go right ahead. And you guys do a great job, especially Plainfield Action Services, my grandmother used to be on the board.
Thank you.
So, with regard to, um, Resolution two fifty, I'm sorry. I hear this, two fifty-three dash twenty-five, I just want to commend the administration, um, regarding this resolution. This House Music Fest has grown tremendously, uh, over the years. It's grown to be arguably the best House Music Fest. And for the city to do business with local vendors, when you hear the sound from this House Music Fest, um, just know that that sound is coming from, uh, Plainfield business, the minority business. And this is just, is, this allows for a great opportunity, uh, for our residents and our local businesses to do business with the city of Plainfield, benefit from what we all have collectively built together to, again, be the best House Music Fest in the region. Thank you. Other questions from council members? Okay, do we have a consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
So, move.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Council President?
Yes.
I looked it up, it's Resolution zero four twenty-five, uh, establishing guidelines for general public comments. Section A says citizens must clearly state their name and address once recognized by the presiding officer. Uh, with your permission, we could just simply add a resolution two twenty-six twenty-five, amending that to simply say citizens must state their municipality. So, we just need a motion to add that to the agenda, and we can amend that section of the, of Resolution.
I'll entertain such motion.
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions?
And again, that's Resolution two two six twenty-five.
All right, thank you. Okay, we now move to ordinances on first reading. Uh, would the Business Administrator please present the ordinances listed on first reading?
Yes, we have two ordinances for your consideration this evening. The first is a financial agreement for a building which will be twenty percent affordable. And you'll see in the details that the escalators are different for the workforce development housing versus the market rate housing. Um, this building, if, if this financial agreement is agreed, is, um, meets with the council's approval, we will go from receiving about twenty-one thousand dollars on our tax rolls every year on this property to about a little over four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, um, obviously, it will be, it will be a big difference. And, uh, this building has a community benefit of providing us with a seven hundred and fifty square foot satellite police station. That is the first ordinance. The second one is an amendment adopting the thir- uh, as an, the thirteenth amendment to the Hundred and Ninety-seven Scattered Sites Redevelopment Plan, and this is just adding two oh eight to two twenty-two Lee Place into that redevelopment plan.
Okay, questions from council? All right, do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added. All right, we'll take a five-minute recess and get started with the voting meeting. Okay, we now move on to ordinance on second reading and final passage. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read M C twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two by title and certify its legal compliance.
M C twenty twenty-five twenty-two is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield in the county of Union, granting a tax exemption with respect to a portion of certain property identified on the city's tax map as Block eight thirty-five, Lot four, five twelve dash five twenty-four Watchon Avenue, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with East Fifth Plainfield C O E Urban Renewal LLC in connection therewith. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public that would like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically? This is regarding M C twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. Anyone online?
No.
Okay, hearing is seeing none, can I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So, move. Second.
Okay. Uh, now may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Second.
Okay, Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on M C twenty twenty-five twenty-two, council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hawke Day?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Madam Deputy, please read M C twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three and certify its legal compliance.
M C twenty twenty-five twenty-three is an amendment to the ordinance of the city of Plainfield in the county of Union, amending Chapter seventeen, the Land Use Ordinance, Article nine, Section seventeen, colon nine dash forty-two G and P, parking, driveways, and loading. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically? Floor is now open, you're given three minutes. Is there anyone online?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
So, move. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Sounded unanimous. Uh, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So, move. Second.
Okay, Clerk, may we have a roll call? There's a lot of second, uh, second, third, fourth. I like the enthusiasm.
Uh, roll call on M C twenty twenty-five twenty-three. Motion was made by the entire council and seconded by Councilwoman Cherry. Council members Briggs Jones?
Second, yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
C.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hawke Day?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, we, we now move to public comments, limited to resolutions and motions being considered this evening. So, a total of thirty minutes has been allocated for the same. Uh, each speaker will be given three minutes. Uh, if you want to call in, the number is on the website or the YouTube, uh, link. Please state your name, your city, and the resolution you wish to speak regarding. The floor is now open. Name and city, your, floor is your, floor is yours.
My name is Valisha, I live in Plainfield, New Jersey. Uh, speaking on ordinance, Arts, R two thirty-four dash twenty-five.
Thank you.
So, um, I want to say first of all, good evening to all the council members. Uh, my name is Ballo. I come here to speak on the Plainfield Rescue Squad and represent the Plainfield Rescue Squad. I not only speak as the former operations captain, but I also speak as a born and raised resident of Plainfield, New Jersey. Um, I just want to state that we are still here. Within the city, but regardless of anything, we have always been committed to the community, and that was our, always our number one key goal, was to make sure that the citizens of Plainfield, New Jersey had the ability to save a life if they needed to. We offered not only, uh, we, we didn't only just answer calls, but we also trained youth. We've had programs for the youth, we had programs for adults who are looking into going into the medical field, which a lot of them are now doctors, nurses, police officers, fire departments, including myself. So, I just want to put out there that we definitely, definitely are still here. We, we hold meetings, we are maintain- maintaining our squad building, but we are here, and we are not going anywhere. not going anywhere. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Timothy Lowe, Jr. I am a resident of Plainfield. I am speaking also for that same ordinance of 234-25. As a former chief of Plainfield Rescue Squad, the daunting tasks that I had to put upon my EMTs during COVID, during regular hours, were immense, to the point where I had to bring in counseling because there was just so much mayhem. We, as the Plainfield Rescue Squad, are committed to the Plainfield even now. We have people that are in JFK EMS, still running calls in Plainfield because they have that much passion and that much care for this city. This city is someone, it's our home. It's where I have friends, family, loved ones. I want to make it clear that we are still here. We have done so much for the city, and it is unfair if anyone thinks otherwise. So, in closing, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that these guys, these ladies and gals behind me that are right here have literally put blood, sweat, and tears into this city. And we have no problem with sharing with Union County or JFK with the building under the guise that, hey, it's our building. We can, we're more than welcome to say, hey, you guys can use our building, this, that, and the third, but it's our building. Okay? That's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Good evening, everybody. Much respect to you. My name is Timothy Lowe, Sr. A lot of you know me, I'm a resident of Plainfield. I really can't say much because they already said it, but I do want to say this, guys. We're not trying to fight you on anything. The community is, has been, and always will be our foremost desire to maintain. If there's something you want to sit down and talk to us about, talk to us. I'm here. I've lived here since 1975. I haven't gone anywhere, and I'm not going anywhere. And I've served my community, I continue to serve my community when necessary. It's just in our blood. You just saw my children come up here. They took after me. Did I plan that? No. But do give us the respect to have the opportunity to sit down with you, discuss what we can do so the community, not me, but the community could be safe. And that's all we're asking. And we don't want any kind of, you know, misunderstandings going out there about what we did and what we, you know, didn't do. Let's sit down and talk, all right? I thank you.
Good evening, my name is Elijah Abdul Wahab, Plainfield. I am a former and also former EMT lieutenant for the Plainfield Rescue Squad. I was there since 2019. I am one of the products of Plainfield Rescue Squad. I entered the squad not knowing anything about the medical field, and through the guidance and education of Timothy Lowe, Sr., Timothy Lowe, Jr., Velisha Robinson, and a whole bunch of other people, I am the person that I am today. I am in school to become a doctor, and I would have not become that without these wonderful people. I would like you to consider using the grant money that you are going to apply for and give that money to the members and administration of the Plainfield Rescue Squad. The Plainfield Rescue Squad has done a lot from my time and even before my time. We have had a great working relationship with not only JFK, Union County, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. So with that money and you guys and everybody's support, I feel like we can come back not just stronger, but a lot more reliable than we have been. And we will always be transparent with not only the people of Plainfield, but the government of Plainfield as well. So that's pretty much all that I have. Please just consider us.
Nancy Pugh, Myrtle Avenue, Plainfield. The new resolution that you're putting forward about just identifying the town, I really appreciate it. I wasn't going to say anything about that, but I really do appreciate it because I found out this weekend that a family member knows, knew of the representative in Minnesota that was killed. In fact, he did some work for her just on Thursday, so I do appreciate the fact that you're considering it. And like you say, things are local, but anymore, everything is, people know people all over the country, and I appreciate the fact that you changed that, and I hope you will instruct the planning board and the Board of Adjustment the same thing, to do just that we're residents of Plainfield and give our zip codes or whatever, but I appreciate that. But I have one technical question, and maybe I missed it when I was out. Are we having a budget hearing tonight, or did we have the budget hearing? We missed it, it was just happened?
There was a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Certainly during generic comment, you can come up if you had any comments or questions about the budget. Name and city for the record.
My name is Robert Edwards. I live at 510A West Ford Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. The reason why I'm here is because, as before, the-
Mr. Edwards, are you going to reference a particular resolution?
Am I going to?
Are you going to reference a resolution or motion being considered this evening?
Oh, I thought this was probably common.
Just for resolutions, that comes just a little bit later. So I will invite you back up momentarily.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. Name, city, and resolution.
Kwanay Palmer Chamblis, resident of Plainfield. Resolution R255-25, this is Health and Human Services. And I too agree that $100,000 seems to be quite low for the need that's in Plainfield. And I noticed this starts July to December, so does that mean the January to June funds have already been allocated and they're out? How many families are you actually able to serve with that money? And is it a one-time service? Do you have people who come repeatedly? Do you turn them away? What happens?
So it's not a question and answer, but you can ask all your questions and he'll answer them?
Yeah.
Does that conclude your comments?
That is my comment on that one.
Okay. No, 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 no. Like your full comments.
No, and I just want to say to the board tonight, I really appreciate the way that you're engaging with these resolutions and these ordinances tonight. The questions that you're asking are pertinent, they're important, and I just appreciate you all for doing that. Thank you.
Okay, when we close public comment, I'll give Director Brown an opportunity to answer those questions. So thank you for that. Is there anyone online?
No.
Okay. So seeing no one in the gallery, you're going to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Name and city and the resolution you're speaking regarding.
Good evening, my name is Sebastian Torres, and I'm a resident of Plainfield. I came to speak regarding resolution, well, I came to speak regarding a couple of different things, but resolution 24925, which is the one about the consumption lounge.
Okay.
So essentially, I was brought here because I was invited by the Rescue Squad, and they invited me because they felt that they needed some public support. I don't know if they're content with the support they received, but I'm happy to be here to provide that support. And so upon just listening to all the discussions tonight, I think there's a lot of dots to connect. One of those, I think, would be starting off with that resolution that I mentioned. When we look at the development and the redevelopment of the city, I think that we have to move beyond just looking at figures and numbers. I know that we look at taxes, and we look at jobs that are going to be provided, and I think that's all great and lovely. But when we study economics, we have to learn about externalities. So I teach economics, and that's one of the things that I like to kind of harp on with my students, right? Externalities, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the concept? Anybody? No? Okay. So externalities, basically what that means is the social costs of an economic decision. So when we make economic decisions and we say, this is going to bring in this amount of tax money, this is going to bring this amount of jobs, there's also always going to be a social cost to those decisions. Now, when we look at marijuana consumption, and like you tried to do a little bit, kind of like compare it to alcohol consumption and things like that, when we don't have the data to back that up, that becomes a little bit problematic, right, to say that a bar is equal to a marijuana lounge. Like, we don't know that, right? These are things that we don't know, we're just comparing it. So we have to take under consideration the externalities that are going to come from those decisions. So I really appreciate the lively discussion that was had here regarding that particular decision, but I think it's important to consider those externalities. Now, the dots I connected here, which is related to the Rescue Squad, right, we have these resolutions that are being pushed forward for redevelopment that include marijuana lounges and things like that. Now with that, there are going to come externalities that are going to be negative effects to the health of our community, for our youth, right, for people that are going to be in those marijuana lounges. And we need to take under consideration that when we have people like these people here who are willing to serve the community, who are willing to fill in the gaps created by those externalities and those social costs of the community, we have to give them the power and the agency to be able to come in and serve the community, instead of causing them problems and making them jump through hoops to be able to do a job that they're passionate about. So I just wanted to kind of connect those dots, right? If we're thinking about redevelopment, and we're thinking about the economics of things, we have to think about externalities and how we could fill them. And we have a great opportunity to fill those externalities here. So just, you know, you guys can look up externalities.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. It's too funny. Seeing no one here, entertain a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Mr. Clerk, would you please announce the consent agenda?
Consent agenda items are identified as Resolutions 22725 through 24725 and 25025 through 25625. Non-consent, Resolution 248 and Resolution 249. Resolution 24425 has been removed from the agenda.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call on the consent agenda items, Council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. The consent agenda items have been approved. We now move to Resolution 24825. Need a motion and a second.
Motion and second, please.
Second.
Okay, Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Council members Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. Resolution passes. We now move to Resolution 24925. Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call 24925, Council members Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
No.
Graham.
No.
McCray.
No.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
No.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
We've got one in favor, and we got six opposed. That resolution fails.
Okay, motion. We now move to ordinances on first reading.
MC 2025-24 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield in the County of Union, granting a tax exemption pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law and the redevelopment area bond financing law with respect to certain property identified on the city's tax map as Block 307, Lots 20.01, 29.01, 31.01, 35, and 36, and designated in the city's tax records as 412-16 East Second Street, 218-26 Richmond Street, 347-423 East Third Street, 343-45 East Third Street, and 339-41 East Third Street, Plainfield, New Jersey, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with SRV Plainfield III Urban Renewal LLC, and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call, MC 2025-24, Council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. Ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, Madam Deputy, read MC 2025-25.
MC 2025-25 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the 13th Amendment to the 197 Scattered Sites Redevelopment Plan dated April 17, 2025.
Okay, entertain a motion to adopt this on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Roll call, MC 2025-25, Council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. Ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, that concludes our business. We now move to general comments. So a total of 30 minutes has been allocated for all public comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Reminder, name and the city you live in for the record. Do not state your address.
Sounds good. Okay, the name is Shaleese Earls, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm here to formally lodge a complaint and ask for relief. This issue that I have, our neighborhood is overrun with cats. I have been in contact with Councilwoman Darcella Sessoms and as well as Shep Brown, but there is no relief. There's no formal trap and release. I have, and we average two litters a year. In 2023, there were two litters born in my garage, May and October. In May, the Plainfield Humane Society was able to come and catch three of the four and trap one of the adult cats and fix them. By the time the second litter was born in October, they were full. Also, their, I guess, agreement with the city had run out. So from October 2023 until now, and we just got another litter within the last month, it's out of control. Add in that I have two neighbors that feed them, so they're growing, they're just growing exponentially. There's no formal trap and release. I'm not sure what Mr. Machado does, this William Machado, but with no formal trap and release, when does it end? And how can I get relief? So there has to be something, and what does this guy have a job for? He's getting paid by the city, but there's no trap and release. So I need some type of release. I'm here to formally state my case, which our councilwoman is fully aware of. What can you do? What can be done? Not sure if you all can answer anything at this time, but-
I'll have the Director of Health and Social Services address your complaint at the conclusion of-
It's, okay, but it's never been addressed in all of the time that I've, over the last three years. And I have the emails and everything and correspondences to back that up. Not sure what you can do, but it's out of control. And I'm tired of picking up behind animals that aren't even my own. Is that good? Thank you.
Good evening. Norma Rogers Frank, the 1200 block of Watchon Avenue, Plainfield. Asking you to reconsider an ordinance that you voted on last month, 2025-16, no parking on the 1200 block south side of Watchon Avenue. Watchon Avenue is an extremely wide street. Emergency vehicles go up and down the street freely. One house should not dictate parking for the rest of- dictate parking for the rest of the block. One house that has issues should not penalize the rest of us. Had this ordinance been passed a month before that, my healthcare team that came to take care of me when I had my knee surgery would then be ticketed now. That same healthcare team is going to need to come back again when I have my second knee done. And they're going to need someplace to park because there's no place in the back of the house to park if all three of the residents that live there are home. I really need you guys to reconsider this ordinance. The street is wide enough. There is no reason that that one block, when the rest of Watchon Avenue, you can park on both sides and no one's had an issue. If there's an issue with that one house on the corner, take care of that issue. Don't penalize the rest of us. What happens to one should not impact the majority. Thank you.
Good evening, Council and City. My name is Robert Edwards. I live at 510 A West Forest Street, Plainfield, New Jersey, and I'm here about an issue that I brought before the Council before, only this time it's got extremely worse. To make it simple, I got pictures, I took pictures of the excessive electricity going through the sockets, under the floors. If I walk in, I'll get shocked. If I go into the kitchen, I get shocked. Here's a picture of the living room. This is 2004. And I took it with electromagnetic meter, which the President had the opportunity to take a picture with. This is the kitchen. This is just pointing at the floor. It's not pointing at a socket. This is, this electricity is coming through the floor. This is in the bedroom. There's no electrical equipment in the bedroom at all. So I should be able to lay in the bed and feel comfortable. No, it doesn't happen like that. Four, five o'clock in the morning, I wake up, I'm shaking, I feel these pins and needles in my feet, in my back, in my head. This one is taken this year, actually last month. This was pointed at the bed. There's, there's nothing electrical going on in the, in the bedroom, but this is what the meter picked up. These are medical reports. Electric shock, this is from 412-25. Electric shock, 5428, 5425, sorry. These are two different hospitals. One is JFK and the other is Atlantic Hospital. Here again is Hackensack, JFK, electrocution, non-fetal effects of electrocution, initial encounter. Diagnosis, exposure to gas or substances. Dizziness, cough, exposure to gas or substances. All of this is happening at 510 A West Forest Street by the housing center of Plainfield. I brought this issue to the City Council before with information, with medical reports, and with pictures of where this is happening. At this rate, they're going to murder me. My question to you is, this needs to be thoroughly investigated. PSMG came in in '23. They took a small investigation. They said this needs to be looked at by a electrician who's a fit, who's familiar with EMG, EMR, because they can't tell whether it's coming from the pole outside or from the appliances under the floor. So this entire environment needs to be looked at.
Thank you.
Will I get a response?
Sure.
Hi, Quanay Chamblin, citizen of Plainfield. I, I'm really concerned about enforcement. Enforcement of codes that we have. I'm glad that the conversation about who is going to enforce the part of the deal that says that you must hire Plainfield residents. Because we have a lot of things that are written, a lot of things, but we have no backup to make sure those things happen and/or consequences if they do not, right? I saw something beautiful that happened, and thank you, Councilwoman Cherry, for what you did at Liberty Village. But I am of the mindset that you find the owners of that property. Because if you decide to buy a property in a distressed area where people are overburdened and we know the results of that, then you have to plan in your plan to address that. One thing that doesn't always happen is people clean up. We don't know why. We wish they would, but we know it happens. So you plan for it. If you want to make money in poor neighborhoods like people do, you have to plan for what happens in poor neighborhoods. And let me just say, this is not just a poor neighborhood thing, because all over the place, HOAs are becoming very, very popular. And HOAs are the wing that enforces people littering, people cutting grass, people maintaining their properties. So this is just a human condition situation that if the HOA communities can plan for it in advance, then we as the wing of the city, right? That was one of the questions that was asked at the legal women voters, right? They asked Terry and they asked Bridget about their relationship with code enforcement. So we need to get our code enforcement down to Liberty Village to make sure the owners of that property, if they can't get the people to clean it, then you hire a grounds person that does it. And you fine them until it's cheaper for them to hire a grounds person than to pay all the fines that you put on them if that's what they want to do. I have a question about the housing, right? When we have the Mount Laurel bill, who is, who is watching to make sure that those units are actually being rented as they should? Who is making sure? If a person who was in that moved out, how do we know that another person who is low income is not moving in? So we're doing a horrible job, I'm sorry, with the enforcement of things that we already have going on, and we expect somebody to come in and enforce that they're going to be doing right at these cannabis places? We have a problem. So are you going to hire someone? I know we have a department here or something, right, that deals with that? Will there be someone hired whose job it is to make sure that those things that are in the agreement are being done? We have an enforcement issue. Please use your code enforcement and make Liberty Village owners do their job. Because I'm not volunteering to clean up where nobody live where you making money.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nancy Peep, our Plainfield West End. I got a text message that the call-in number isn't working and that when they, they try to call in, it shows a date of June 9th, just to be sure. So you might want to repeat the correct number because somebody is trying to call in and they can't get through. Am I, because I'm up here, I know you're going to put possibly 200 more apartments on West Front Street. And I know that at the planning board meetings and Board of Adjustment meetings, sometimes they have traffic studies. Has the city ever done a master traffic study of the 200 apartments that could possibly go in the 400 block of Front Street and the ones that are going to go in the 600 block? Because right now, sometimes at 5:00, you can't get between Plainfield Avenue and Grand Avenue. The traffic is just backed up because there's no second access across the block. So we're all backed up. And now, even now, at 5:00 on Plainfield Avenue, it's backed up past A Street all the time. And it's consistently getting worse and worse and worse. And, and it takes me a lot longer to get across town than it used to. But, you know, if you have these individual developers doing individual traffic studies and you don't have a cumulative traffic study, we're going to be landlocked, just like our LA and, and Route 95 down there in DC where nobody can move. Thank you very much.
Hi, Dan Rossen, Plainfield, New Jersey. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I wanted to support my neighbor here. I also have concerns about the ordinance that was passed last month about the no parking on the 1200 block of Watchon. I live on that block. I know I'm not supposed to say that anymore, but I live on that block and I just really don't understand. And I should have read the agenda that day and I didn't. And I should have come to the meeting and I didn't. But I would like you to reconsider it. It doesn't really seem to be solving any kind of problem. There isn't a parking issue there. I take pictures regularly there and at most, there's one or two cars on that entire block. So I'm, I'm happy to have communication to get a deeper understanding of why all of a sudden there's no parking in front of my house. But it just, I'd rather the resources go to something that is actually needed somewhere else in the city. Some, there's areas of the city who do, that do need no parking zones like that. My block, my street, that is not one of the places that needs it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's one person with their hand raised online.
Okay, so I guess the number is operational. Can you authorize them?
Caller ending in 481, please unmute yourself.
Name and city.
Hello?
Yes, your name and city for the record. Floor is yours.
Sure. Sharice Coons, Plainfield. I was, I have a couple of items actually that I wanted to bring up. My first is I wanted to commend Councilman Wyatt for bringing up the discussion about adding your address, because that was actually something that, a note that I, that I made that I was going to bring up during public comment. But, you know, I'm glad that's been addressed. My second point is, I did hear Nancy speak about the traffic in the city, and this is something that I've discussed previously at council meetings. There is a horrible traffic problem in the city. Typically, I live on the east end of the city. Whenever I have to travel to the west end, most cases, I go out to 22, Route 22, because getting from the east end to the west end, it takes a very long time because of the amount of traffic. And that is even without all of the extra development that is planned in the city. So I would have to agree with her that there needs to be a comprehensive study done on traffic in the city because we're, it's very densely populated and there's a lot of traffic out there. And not to mention, there's a lot of crazy drivers in Plainfield. I try not to, I don't know if it's the young kids or folks who've just gotten their licenses and, but it, it's very difficult to drive through the city. I try to go out to Route 22 to drive as much as possible. And then that's not even, that's not any better. My third point is, I did see the new speed bumps on Kensington Avenue, and I thought those were so great. And I have to ask, is it possible, and I'd like to specifically speak with Councilwoman Graham, who is my councilman in this ward, please take a look at McKinley Place. McKinley Place is that Little Dedden block between Johnson Avenue and Berkman, where it's a small block. It's only seven houses on the block, but getting out of McKinley Place is very difficult when you're exiting the street.
Thank you.
It would help...
Your time just expired. Okay, seeing no more, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, public comment is now closed. Director, or any member of the administration, there were questions regarding citywide traffic study. A gentleman also spoke about electrical, electromagnetic problems and seepage in his apartment that should be commented on. Some response to him regarding that? And if there was anything that I missed? Cats, cats as well. Speak regarding the plan for all the excessive cats that are, that are being, Director Brown, you can take that. So floor is yours. Whoever, anybody can go first.
I'll go first. Thank you, Council.
You're welcome.
I'll, I'll first address the question around the grant, and thank you for that question. The award is from January, the original award was from January to June, and this is the secondary part of the grant, and it will go from July to December. On average, how many people are assisted? We look at about 60, 60 families that will be impacted. So earlier I said anywhere from five to nine. So at the low end, 60 times five is 300 families, about 300 individuals we should, we may impact. And on the higher end, when we look at nine family members, we'll talk about 540. Our families tend to be single female households. And so although I do have an average of about $8,000 in rent, does that go, does $100,000 go all the way? Absolutely not. But it is a grant and we, we couple those with other grants that we get, and we actively seek more grants. As for the time service, we put a stipulation every two years. However, if you come to our office next year and you say you still need assistance, and that happens, and it happens for many different reasons, negative, none of them negative, we will work with our partners to see how you could be assisted. We never, we never allow you to go without assistance. And that is, that is one of the things we are most proud of. We will reach out to our partners to help find assistance, even though we may not be able to do it. But if we can't help you with rental assistance, we can certainly work with you when it comes to utilities. As for cats, it is certainly something that we have been challenged with in the city. It was brought up earlier by the resident herself that her neighbors are feeding the cats, and that is something that is a challenge. We have sent out our animal control officers to talk to the neighbors to stop feeding their cats. But also in this new budget, we do have some dollars, not a lot of dollars, but dollars set aside where we can begin a trap and neuter program. And hopefully, we will begin to chip away at the challenge. But I will say, it's a human issue, right? If you continue to feed the cats, they will come back. If you, if you create an environment that is warm and welcoming and, and that is a human reaction to any living thing, right, it will cause those animals to come back. And so this is a challenge that we face. While we remediate at one house, the houses around, or even one house, will be feeding, and that will draw people back, draw people back, draw, draw the cats back, excuse me, draw the cats back to the house. And that really is what I have to say.
Okay. Want to talk about the parking study? The, or traffic, traffic study?
Okay. We have conducted a parking system management study. We are actually going to continue to look at our residential parking. We've also conducted a complete street study that looks at all modes of travel, whether you're walking, driving, driving a truck, or biking. We can continue to look at this in a comprehensive mobility plan. This is a part of what we need to look at when we're considering where we would have our shuttle service.
I know that it was mentioned about traffic studies whenever there is a, and the individual who mentioned it was actually correct. Whenever there is a building or a development that is put up, there is a traffic study that is done around that building, centering around that area. What is the impacts? How does it look? We, we do this with every development, whether it, it goes forward or not. I'm sorry. That was already passed. In terms of the traffic study, like I said, we continually do these. We do these every time we put down speed, speed humps. So we're constantly looking at ways where we can improve the mobility throughout the city. As you know, we have continuous construction that goes on throughout the city as well. As the construction goes on, it slows things down. But once the construction is complete, the railways open back up, and it allows us to move throughout the city a little. and it allows us to move throughout the city a little bit better. This is a work in progress, so we continually ask people to kind of be understanding of what we're trying to do. It is all in making Plainfield a better city for everyone. So whether it's roadway paving, or it's development, or it's anything that we have going on, let us get most of the finished product done before it's, well, did you do this or did you do that? Because we are constantly working to make the city better. We hear your problems, we hear your concerns, and we want to continue to work to, to fix them. Thank you.
Do you, do you want me to address the, um, the issue in the gentleman's?
Please.
Okay. So, um, you know, we have heard your concern before, and we do take it very seriously. We have sent the fire department there, and I know we've also been working with the housing authority. Um, I will follow up with the housing authority to see where they are in that complete.
Okay. All right, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or sentences? Nope. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.